Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 5th, 2016. If you could please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Clint?
Here.
Councilmember Manning?
Here.
Councilmember Denver?
Here.
Councilmember Geisler?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Wells?
Here.
Mayor Cook?
Here.
The first, thank you, the first item on our agenda this evening is to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler to adopt the agenda. Any discussion, changes, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. And the very first item on our agenda is to turn this over to Chief Brad Wise.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Council, City Staff, citizens of Coon Rapids. It's a great night tonight, in that I get to introduce the newest officers to the Coon Rapids Police Department. We've been doing this for quite a while and it's a great tradition, I think. Tonight, the formal introduction will be of our newest officers, Denny Cook and Dan DuRett. And we're doing this on the occasion of their graduation from our field training program. And of course, you know that it's worthwhile that we do this because in Coon Rapids, we pride ourselves in the relationship the officers have with their citizens. We believe in striving for excellence. We also believe in professionalism. And I think these two young men demonstrate that in spades. So as part of the introduction, the first officer I'd like to introduce is to my immediate left, Denny Cook. Denny is from Roseville, Minnesota. And kind of interestingly, he, we could say his first law enforcement experience was in fifth grade as a school bus patrol.
But Denny would say that he had always had an interest in law enforcement.
He became a police explorer. As you know, we have a police explorer post here in Coon Rapids, which allows kids the opportunity to learn about policing and learn about service to their community. But beyond that, Denny took the time to, after his explorer experience, volunteer for the Roseville Police Department, where he worked 2,000 hours of volunteer time for his city there. Denny was a student at Metropolitan State University, where he earned a BA, actually two majors in both criminal justice and law enforcement. And as young as he looks, actually, Denny's been with us for a while. He started in 2011 as a CSO, and Community Service Officer, for those who may not know what that is. Arguably, one of the hardest working positions in the city of Coon Rapids. We jokingly refer to them as dog-catching locksmiths. It's meant to be funny, but they really work hard to provide service to the citizens and it gives us a great chance to see how they work for the city. And thus, he now was given the opportunity and is going to be a sworn police officer for us. Standing next to him is Dan DuRett. Dan is from Champlin. He grew up in Champlin, Minnesota, and graduated from Champlin Park High School. And Dan developed his passion for law enforcement from his father, that you're going to meet later. His dad is a 30-year police veteran for the city of Maple Grove. He, Dan, earned an Associate in Science in Law Enforcement, North Hennepin Community College. He had a more interesting, or I should say, more diverse work history, in that he spent a number of years in the restaurant business, which can be very trying, providing service in that framework. And also, though, he transitioned to law enforcement with his first experience, working for Anoka Police Department, as a security officer for the Regional Treatment Center, the old state hospital. Very challenging position. And simultaneous to that, he was also a community service officer, only for the Anoka County Sheriff's Office. Their first day as trainees was November 23rd. Since that time, they've been trained and evaluated on a daily basis. And I, like I've told the citizens many times in the past, our training process is very stressful. It's designed to be stressful. We want to push these young people to make sure they have what it takes to provide the level of service they need to for our citizens. In the case of these two, we are confident that we have indeed hired the right people and that they've earned their badges. So now, to speak to both Denny and Dan. Tonight, the two of you are officially graduating from our field training program. Symbolically, we've removed your trainee badges, as we are planning to present you with your permanent badges, number 148 and number 149 respectively, because you earned them. Two things about the badges, these will be your permanent badges, is that first, it represents the, all the work that went into both hiring the two of you, but the training and evaluating. You know that there was a number of people that are working to help you be successful and have a great interest in you being successful, so this badge represents that. But secondly, and most importantly, is never forget, it's the citizens' badge. It belongs to the citizens of Coon Rapids, and they are entrusting you with it. So always honor this badge and honor the pledge that you're about to give to the mayor. So you have now both become members of a proud organization of dedicated professionals. And on behalf of that organization, I welcome you to our police department family. Know that your peers and colleagues and myself will do everything we can to help you be successful. So with that, the first badge painting will be of Officer Denny Cook. And for him, he has asked for his father Kurt to pin the badge on him. So Denny, I'll have you step to the middle here, and Kurt, if you want to come up with me.
Mr. Mayor, if you're ready to do the vote for...
Oh, absolutely.
And I should say, there's no relation between you two, Mr. Mayor. You probably do that, but you just seem okay.
Yep, yep. We'll forgive you for the misspelling of the last name. All right. Welcome. Chief, have you seen the cops show they do at Roseville? It's, oh, they actually do their own version of cops. They're on their cable television. It's pretty good. All right. So if you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me, and we'll use Dennis, since that's what it says here. "I, Dennis Cook, do solemnly swear..."
"I, Dennis Cook, do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota..."
"...and discharge faithfully..."
"...and discharge faithfully..."
"...the duties of a police officer for the city of Coon Rapids..."
"...the duties of a police officer for the city of Coon Rapids..."
"...in the county of Anoka..."
"...in the county of Anoka..."
"...and the state of Minnesota..."
"...in the state of Minnesota..."
"...to the best of my judgment and ability..."
"...to the best of my judgment and ability."
And Mr. Mayor, for our second badge painting, Dan DuRett, he is having his father, Steve
"I, Daniel DuRett..."
"I, Daniel DuRett..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"That I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota..."
"And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota..."
"...and discharge faithfully..."
"And discharge faithfully..."
"...the duties of a police officer for the city of Coon Rapids..."
"The duties of police officer for the city of Coon Rapids..."
"...in the county of Anoka..."
"In the county of Anoka..."
"...and the state of Minnesota..."
"In the state of Minnesota..."
"...to the best of my judgment and ability..."
"To the best of my judgment and ability."
Right.
Yeah, I thought he was gonna say that, yeah.
I actually started in the hospitality industry. So it's a tough business, if anybody's working in it, it's a tough business.
Pepper spray.
No, no, I remember, I remember that when we were...
Your service skills get honed, Dan.
I thought it was gonna say something about being able to control.
I was just gonna say, I haven't seen you in a long time, and then you just blow out of here again.
Wild starts at seven.
The wild is on in 10 minutes.
All right, I think we can move on with the minutes now. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes for the March 22nd, 2016 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Any corrections or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Upsteem?
That motion carries with two abstentions, Councilors Clint and Manning. Next item on our agenda, let's see, now we're into our consent agenda. We've got five items there. The first one is accepting the Coon Creek Watershed Grant. And I just want to kind of read the discussion points here, because some of you might find it interesting. The city of Coon Rapids has been awarded funding through the Coon Creek Watershed District's Water Education Grant in the amount of $1,000. With this grant, the city intends to purchase irrigation sensors from Best Irrigation, which is a local company. They're also a vendor at the 2016 Green Expo. The sensors detect both moisture and frost, and adjust irrigation controls to prevent the system from running until conditions warrant more moisture. While current regulations require newly installed systems to include these sensors, older systems are not typically equipped with this feature. So, Coon Rapids residents may apply to be selected to participate in the pilot program that the city will run for the next three years. Ten households will be selected and will be required to sign an agreement to allow the city permission to access the past three years of water use data and continue to track their water use patterns for the next three years. Each sensor will be professionally installed early this spring, at the start of the watering season, which we're awfully close to now. Information gathered from these homes will be used to educate on the importance of water conservation practices in homes and the direct benefits of these irrigation sensors. And the goal is to increase education resulting in behavior changes in residents related to water conservation, specifically in yard irrigation systems. All data collected will be tracked, analyzed, and shared with the public for educational purposes. Total cost of this project is $1,150. The watershed grant was approved for $1,000, and the remaining $150 will be covered by the city's utility fund. So that was as a way to let you know that if you are interested in participating, if you don't already have one of these, you can get your name in to be one of the 10. Next item on the consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 16-44, authorizing donation of the playground equipment. We are going to be redoing the playground equipment this year. It'll be replaced in Delta Park, Mason Park, and Pheasant Ridge Park. And then additionally, Woodview Park will also be replacing playground equipment. And we were, we're looking to donate the old equipment from these facilities to the nonprofit organization Kids Around the World Incorporated. The organization renovates used park equipment and reinstalls it in underprivileged areas around the world, and we have made donations to them in the past. So we're looking at approving Resolution 16-44, authorizing the donation of used playground equipment to Kids Around the World, a nonprofit organization, and approve the agreement with Kids Around the World Incorporated for playground equipment removal and authorize execution of the agreement by appropriate city officials. Next item on the consent agenda, we would like to thank Jonathan Lipinski for his service to the Planning Commission, and welcome, as we are appointing Kathy Casey to the Planning Commission. So we're looking at adopting Resolution 16-45, appointing Kathy Casey to the Planning Commission with a term to expire on December 31st, 2017. Next item on the consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 16-47, appointing Bradley Janowski and Cindy Nutter to the Safety Commission, with terms to expire on December 31st, 2018. Those will fill in the two vacancies that we had. And the last item on the consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 16-48, a resolution authorizing donation of fire, dog, robot equipment to the city of Bram, Minnesota. And that is the, our Coon Rapids Fire Department has an educational fire, dog, robot that is being replaced, and the city of Bram, Minnesota is interested in receiving the fire, dog, robot. Well, really, who wouldn't be? And the staff recommends donation of this fire, dog, to the city of Bram.
The Honor.
Councilor Manning.
I move approval of consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Johnson, to adopt the consent agenda. Any questions or discussion?
Goodbye, Sparky.
Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And that motion is carried. The next item on our agenda is item eight, to consider a contract award for the 2016 Street Maintenance Program, Project 16-5. This is the one where we have the joint powers agreement with the cities of Andover, Anoka, Brooklyn Center, Circle Pines, Columbia Heights, Coon Rapids, East Bethel Fridley, Ham Lake, and Mottamidi. Gives us a lot of buying power, and we have contract awards for seal coating, pavement markings, street sweeping, crack sealing, fog sealing, and we're looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Demmer and a second by Geisler, to adopt Resolution Number 16-5 Sub 9A, awarding a contract to Pearson Brothers Incorporated for Batumina Seal Coating in the base bid amount of $1,562,617.20, and an alternate bid amount of $1,541,936.26. B, adopt Resolution Number 16-5 Sub 9B, awarding a contract to AAA Striping Service Company for pavement markings in the amount of $188,094.40. Adopt Resolution Number 16-5 Sub 9C, awarding a contract to Pearson Brothers Incorporated for seasonal street sweeping in the amount of $62,780. And D, adopt Resolution Number 16-5 Sub 9D, awarding a contract to American Pavement Solutions Incorporated for crack sealing in the amount of $327,277.30. And to adopt Resolution Number 16-5 9E, awarding a contract to Pearson Brothers Incorporated for fog sealing in the amount of $115,750. Any discussion?
The Honor.
Councilor Manning.
I'm guessing everybody that's watching this is saying, what is fog sealing?
Mr. Hammer, you want to cover that again?
I guess I would say fog sealing is a little more similar to what a homeowner might do for their own seal coating of their driveway. It's kind of a single application versus a seal coat where you put down the oil, the rock, you pound it in. So it's, it's more of a stickier surface. We use it in cul-de-sacs and things, because after you put the rock down, all the turning movements and other areas where there's high traffic, that, that rock flakes off the surface. So you use the fog sealing and it stands up. It's a little bit thicker, and it's a little more tacky.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And that motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to consider Resolution Number 15-16 Sub 9, awarding a contract for the Sand Creek Building Improvements, Project 15-16. And Mr. Hammer, is there any discussion you want to give? Because there was, was there an alternate bid in there that could have been considered if we wanted to go with the masonry construction, or did I misread that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there was an alternate bid for the masonry exterior, but the low bidder was not, there was only two individuals that put in a bid for that. So if we wanted to accept the alternate, we would have to go with somebody who was a higher bidder, and we'd end up spending more money to do it. It was like $90,000 more. So there is no alternate for this one. There was, however, a placeholder for C-22 fire protection. And we did get a couple of bids, but there's still some clarification going on based upon an alarm system that's being recommended for the, by the fire department. So I don't have anything, we're going to have to delay on C-22, and I'll have to come back for that award. But it will be certainly within that estimated $50,000. It'll probably be slightly less than that. But I didn't have the answers I needed to make a good recommendation for you tonight. So we'll, we'll come back at the next meeting for C-22.
But, okay. C-3, all right, we have, we've got that on here. Okay.
The Honor.
Councilor Clint.
Can I just ask Mr. Hammer, is what we see here now, is that the materials and the, you know, the board you brought at that one workshop we had, that had, had different components to it?
That's correct, Councilmember Clint. It, it's the architectural metal, that composite roofing material that comes down the sides. It does have a band of ephes on the bottom, that's a little more resistant, where skateboards and kicking and that, so yes, it's, that board is what you saw is what's being installed. So it's got woods and metals and ephes, and that composite roofing material, that's the primary structure components.
Did we at one time talk about some kind of, I don't know, like, for lack of a better word, that fake brick?
And that's the alternate that the mayor was just discussing. They were gonna put a veneer on the outside, and that was bid as an alternate. But because there was only a few bidders, the cost actually went higher.
Okay.
I would like to publicly state that I made a mistake last year. Councilor Wells was absolutely right. We should have gone with the bid last year, when we could have gotten a block building. I just need to publicly say that.
Me too.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to award contracts C-1, C-2, C-4 through C-21, C-23 and C-24 for the Sand Creek Park Building Improvements, as recommended by the construction manager in detail in our memo.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Wells. Are we gonna need motions on the second two, or are those just kind of for information? The, the item C-3 and C-22, those are just kind of information then?
C-3 was an informational item.
Item, it's just a budget holder for $5,000, and C-22 I will be bringing back to you at the next available meeting.
Okay, so we've got everything we need in that one motion?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other discussion? Councilor Demmer?
Yeah, so I thought we were also talking about some options for smaller and cheaper. Is that something, I missed a work session, it's very possible it all got discussed there, but was that something that just sort of got taken off the table, or what was the story there?
Councilmember Demmer, members of the council, after kind of putting all the stuff together, we looked at neighboring communities and cost per square foot, and what's the appropriate size. I did send an email out to the council the end of February, at which point I laid out what my thoughts would be on this, and whether or not we wanted to rehash this conversation, and what my recommendation would be. And based upon that, I received little or no feedback, and so here I am, making the recommendation that was contained within that email correspondence.
Yeah, it's one of those where it's hard, because we told you, go, you know, we, I looked back at the old meeting, and we said, yeah, these are the plans we want, and go, go do it. And then, as we found out, it came back more expensive than we thought. And I hate to be the person who says, go build this building, and then vote no when it actually comes up. It's tough when it comes back higher than, than what we'd hoped. And we've taken a couple swings at it, and it seems like this is what it's gonna cost if we're gonna build one, even if that's not what everyone would like it to cost.
I will add that there will be some savings in this, in that the maintenance facility, the garage component where we're gonna store our facilities, is going to be removed from the contract. But in order to do so, we would have had to clarify some drawings and some specifications, and spend money to save money. So I'll just work through the construction project to realize those savings. And then I'm currently talking to some local builders, CRAA, as they want to have a facility as well. And I believe we can build it for probably a third of the cost of what's contained within here. So these numbers will come down to the tune of about $80,000 by removing that structure. And we'll be working with other groups to try to build two for the price of one.
I think part of the rest of the challenge is, we're looking at engineer, not even engineering estimates, we're kind of looking at guestimates. When the park bond referendum was done, and what year were those numbers pulled up?
12, 2012.
Yeah, 2012, and we've seen nothing but the construction industry prices going up. And it's just been, it's like, okay, let's just get it done before it costs even more for a smaller one. So, Councilor Clint.
And my concern, you know, we all know what, you know, a brick structure would have looked like. And, you know, it's hard for us not seeing a building that's made out of all these components, just, so I guess I'm just taking your word for it. Because, because this is, you know, part of our whole park, the whole new park. We want it to really look nice and stand out, and not have people come back later and say, that's what we got? So I'm trusting you...
Councilmember Clint.
...that this is gonna be a great-looking building.
I know you voiced some of your concerns in the past. And yes, it's a unique building.
Yeah.
And it's gonna have some unique architecture to it, which I think is kind of what's interesting about it. I too have some concerns about durability and other things, but after working through all of those, and work session and going through, and I think Matt shot some hockey pucks at some of them to see how they'd stand up, and...
And he hit it.
Well, I hope somebody with more of a power shot than Matt did. Just kidding.
I think one of the, the good takeaways from this building...
It's a good challenge.
One of the good takeaways from this building is the utilities and those costs. It's, it's gonna be better insulated, and so the long-term costs of it will be less. Doing some replacement of single panels will be easier than maybe removing graffiti from a whole building, or sandblasting and other. So I think from a long-term maintenance and, and energy costs, I think we're going to be better off than the block building. But at a comparable price, you know, I could flip the coin back in that time with Councilmember Wells, and probably say, we could have saved ourselves a year, and the building may have been up by now. But hindsight's 2020.
And I trust you as well, but I did verify it with a, with a friend of ours that is in the grad school for architecture. Because I, I looked at the architectural drawings, and I went, gosh, that's just a little modern for me. And I sent it to him, and he goes, I love it, that's, that's great, that's how they're doing things now. So I went, okay, good. So there we are.
That's good, because engineers and architects don't always agree.
All right. Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And that motion carries. Build us a building, Mr. Hammer. All right, number 10 on our agenda. Now that we have changed the ordinances to allow for brew pubs and taprooms, and we've created licensing opportunities, now we have to set a price. So we are looking at adopting licensing fees for micro-distillery cocktail rooms at $7.50, micro-distillery off-sale license at $3.80, brew pub off-sale license of $3.80, a small brewer off-sale license of $3.80, and a brewer taproom license. And this is an introduction... And this is an introduction and if there's no questions, we will consider this introduced. Item eleven on our agenda. Now, because, wasn't this what we just kicked down the road at the HRA?
Something related to that.
This is the actual approval of the registered land survey itself.
Okay, so this one we can do.
We do want you to act on this tonight.
Oh, you do? Item eleven on our agenda this evening is Planning Commission sixteen dash seven, Consider Resolution sixteen dash thirty-nine, Approving a Registered Land Survey, ninety fifty-five dash ninety sixty-five East River Road, City of Coon Rapids. The city HRA, as part of the Scattered Site Program, acquired ownership of the property at ninety sixty-five East River Road. During the title search, a discrepancy was found in the legal description. There is an area with overlapping legal descriptions for the city's lot and the adjacent lot to the south, ninety fifty-five East River Road. To complicate the matter, the city's property has an abstract title and the property to the south has a torrents title. Tract B, which is the area of overlap, has historically been considered part of the city-owned parcel and separated from the lot to the south by a fence. Since the city parcel and the adjacent parcel have different types of titles, a lot line adjustment to correct the overlap is not an option and this registered land survey will create a new lot, Tract B, and the adjacent lot to the south, Tract A. Tract B can then be combined with the city parcel and sold as one lot. And I feel that was way too much inside baseball. So what would council like to do? Councilor Manning?
I move adoption of Resolution sixteen dash thirty-nine with the two stated conditions.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Next item on our agenda. Make sure. Yes. Consider introduction of an ordinance revising the allowed exterior building materials. And we are looking at proposing some changes. So we're looking at a description of architectural glass, adding that to the exterior building materials. We're looking at, we don't want to prohibit a mirrored glass building. We're looking at approving of other materials. And you know what? If this is really something that's interesting, it's all in the agenda pack. So this is an introduction of Planning Case sixteen dash three, revising the acceptable materials for multifamily institutional, commercial and industrial buildings. Mr. Hammer, you're smiling, did you want to actually cover some of this or no?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then that is introduced. Item thirteen is to consider a water rate increase. Ms. Lake, do you want to do this?
Well, maybe what I will do, mayor and council, is just kind of explain what's happening here and what we are requesting. Annually, staff looks at the water and sewer funds just to look at how the fees are covering the costs. So what we're recommending for this upcoming, it would take effect in May, it would be a nearly ten percent increase on most of the rate classes for the water fund. And if you recall, we took on that water master plan and we knew that that was going to require pretty extensive water rates. The thing we did not take into account with that was all the infrastructure that we're replacing under the streets and we're doing all those MSA projects and those are our major water main improvements, that's about seven point three million dollars. So just to cover the interest cost on that and then the depreciation of those, even though it goes for like forty or fifty years, it adds up when you're talking about a big number like that. So what we're recommending here is that we increase the water rates and this will try to stay on top of it. Our water fund has been operating nearly in the black. As you also remember, people are not using as much water as they used to. So I just kind of put a little chart in there, if you look at it, two out of the last nine years, we actually had an increase in the water sales or the number of gallons pumped, but every other year, there was a reduction. And even so far this year, in two thousand and sixteen, the first month that I looked at, actually would be the first two months because we're now into April, we'd already gone down again from that period, the same period last year. So it continues to go down. So thus, even though, you know, we are trying to control costs and I think there have some, been some major strides, other things are coming up that we do need to, to spend some money on and then the significant infrastructure replacements. The whole water master plan, if we're talking about a new tower, we've got well rehabs, we replaced that SCADA system, that was like about nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. All these things are, are pretty extensive, but they're keeping our system pretty up to date. So we think that they're worthwhile doing, it's just that we have to raise rates to keep up with that. So unfortunately, it's a, you know, it's a fairly high increase. I will point out that we put this on the bills, the last four quarters of bills that have been sent out, so every quarter has been notified that we are anticipating that there'd be a ten percent increase in water and possibly a five percent in sewer. So we'll get to sewer next year, but we have notified people. We haven't heard comments back, I don't know if people are looking at it on their bills, I don't know if they're thinking about it. It's, you know, it doesn't affect everybody all that much, but still it is a pretty significant increase.
Councilor Clint and then Councilor Manning?
This is always a, a touchy subject and now that we have new council members to deal with this, I think this is our first time of, of looking at this and it's always so hard because so many people are conserving water and yet the prices are going up. And I guess I'm having a hard time because what you're also showing us here is that we've actually been coming out, you know, ahead of the game as far as money goes. We haven't been oozing money, we actually have had spent less than what we had anticipated, which I think is a good thing and it shows that, you know, we're doing something right. And so for me, it's like, well, we're saving money, people are doing their best to conserve my, you know, the water and yet we're still raising the prices. And I understand the need for it, but I, I have a hard time doing it that much right now. If we had a component, and I think this is something we need to start working on, is looking at ways to fix this, if people are using less water, then should we stop doing something, pumping less or shutting down some things or somehow, you know, balancing the scales that way? I mean, if we're continuing to use everything and it's costing the same amount of money every year, but people are using less, it just doesn't make sense to me. And so I, I guess I'd like to see us really concentrate on some other kind of alternatives to go along with the people using less consumption. Because we're just, we're saying, yeah, they're using less, but yes, we still have to raise the rates and we're not giving them any other option of what are we doing to get our costs down since people aren't using the water?
Mr. Hammer?
Sure, please. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Clint, members of the council, one of the reasons why we have money at the end and we're working, because there's left water pumped. So in the winter time, out of our twenty-four wells, we only use nine of them, we shut them down, but all of that water has to plant, run through the plant. Because we're pumping less, we're using less chemicals, so we are saving money. The thing that we're not saving on is just the wear and tear on that infrastructure and the depreciation. And now we've got big projects and we've got to fix those mains. So you can't change digging up mains and replacing mains, you can control your pumping, you control your chemicals, but the constant is, is the maintenance component of that. But we are saving because less is being pumped and less is being consumed. It, it's kind of a catch twenty-two and same thing back to this conservation grant, we're going to spend a hundred and fifty dollars to encourage people to conserve and even more. Now, it depends on what's, what's good, you know, what, what's the right thing to do versus what's the costly thing to do.
Can I just?
Mr.?
I guess something I'm thinking of is that we're working towards a goal of not having to increase as much because like you say, we're pumping less, we're less chemicals, but we still have to fix these other things. And as we're fixing them or improving them, are we then going to be saving money on, on those structures that we're doing new ones because they're so much more efficient or better quality or whatever? And at the same time, are there some things that we can just get rid of? Because they're old and we're placing them with something new, we can just get rid of old ones? So we're actually working towards a specific goal?
Well, part of our well rehab program is just that. You're looking at maintaining them at a constant level versus waiting for things to break and then spending big dollars. You're replacing old outdated pumps with variable frequency drives, which helps on the energy side of things. Energy costs continue to go up, so that's, that's a constant. The pipes in the ground, you, you can't build a more efficient water tower. I mean, you can look at the coatings you put on it and how long they're going to last and, but you're really not changing the pipes that are in the ground and the, the structures that are, we can't get rid of well houses. I mean, there might be a point in the future if we continue to decline that maybe we let a few wells go and, and close down some pump houses. But when you do that, then if you ever need them again because of growth or other things that happen, it's very difficult to, to get them back. So we are looking for efficiencies, but when our built infrastructure is already there, it's kind of hard to retract that.
I think we have to maintain our capacity because we're looking at adding literally hundreds and hundreds of housing units, plus as our residents age in place, which is a beautiful thing in our homes, they use less water than when it turns over to a young family again. So I don't know, I mean, I think we, we've got an opportunity to be selling some more water here in the future. I'm sorry, who is, Ms. Lake? You know what, can I get Councilor Manning, because he's been really patient, and then Ms. Lake?
And that's a virtue, being patient. Anyway, I just had two questions. One is, nine, or two thousand twelve, we sold twenty-four point five percent more. What is the reason for that? Does anybody remember? Is there, was there something that year that was unusual?
Did we sell to other cities one year?
No, we didn't. Not since I've been here, no. You know what, I can't keep track of the wet years and the dry years.
So it might have been springtime, huh?
Yeah, I think a lot of it is sprinkling because you can look at the pumping in that year and you're looking at that, so it was a seven percent increase in the gallons pumped, but then it dropped off again in two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen.
Well, that's why it stuck out so much.
Right, exactly, it did. And if you were to go back in time, I mean, these were, the numbers were, are a lot higher. I mean, we've just continually gone down except for that year that you're picking. And I just, I can't remember what happened.
I think that was a seasonally dry year.
Or was that the year you left your toilet running?
Talking me?
I was, and Mayor Council was going to mention, some of that might be the effect of the tiered system too. So as we pump more, you're eventually, if you're watering your lawn more, you're going to start to elevate into a higher level, higher expense tier for that pumping, so there's sort of this, not exponential, but an increase in, in that. So when we see years of less pumping, you're paying less per gallon than you would in a year of sprinkling your lawn a lot.
And the other thing is, you know, when I first saw this, I had the same reaction, oh geez, having to raise the rates, you know, nobody wants to do it. When, when I read through this, it really is quite clear as to why we have to, we are going through a, a infrastructure change here that's really been big, you know, over the last five years. So I can understand it, it doesn't mean that anybody likes it, including me, but it, it's reasonable. And the question I had, and you probably won't have the answer to this, on, I think we build quarterly on the water, right?
Right.
What, on the average house, can you give me an idea of what that would be in terms of real dollars increase?
Oh, shoot, I should have done that.
Isn't that one ten? We just had this at last month's meeting.
It's probably about, I'm going to say it's about, because it's two dollars in the base fee, so that's a given. And I'm going to say maybe it's another dollar or so, so maybe three dollars.
So about twelve dollars more per year in that neighborhood?
On tier one?
No, generally, I mean, you know, people have really cut back. So those winter quarters, other than the summer quarter, when people are sprinkling. But in my house, the last two years, I didn't use my sprinkler at all and I water regularly. So those two years, I remember that my, I didn't have to sprinkle. So I didn't use a lot of water, even in the summer. But the average consumption per house is probably closer to seventeen now, whereas I think when I started doing this back, you know, a while ago, in this city, it was probably closer to twenty-five. So it's really come down on average per house, what, what people are using. So, but I guess we have to remember too, the city has developed and I think the fact that everybody's got trees now and, and people are aging, you know, there's just less reasons to use water, they may not even be conserving on purpose, it's just that they don't need to, you know, because it's not the, the wide open sand plain when a lot of these houses were built. So the one thing I was going to point out though too is, even though we're replacing a lot of these water mains and they are huge ticket items, I mean, you can see how much I, I put in there just on the depreciation and interest, some of that is going to save costs in the, you know, over the next few years because we had all those valves that were breaking, that were rusting. So whenever that's happening, you know, we'll have water main breaks and that's kind of, you got to drop everything and fix it and those are expensive. So hopefully, by spending all this money on all this infrastructure, we're going to reduce some of those water main breaks and, and those expensive costs. You know, there's not a lot in the water fund that, that's variable, that's, that varies in terms of usage and we've talked about it, energy and chemicals, other than labor. But labor too, you know, if you're going out and you have to check these mains and do water shut offs and do the things that we service people with, you know, I mean, we can try to scale back on the amount of labor, but there's been a lot of intense activity with the meters and that's cost a lot for the city. And we are trying really hard to try to get the company to work with us to, to reduce the amount of labor that we have to incur to fix meters. Some of the things, you know, like the cost for you folks just passed that utility billing where we're going to charge a user fee, you know, now instead of credit cards. Some of those things, they're, they're not huge costs, but they are costs and those are all the kinds of things that we keep trying to think of. You know, you look at the, the processes that we have in place and who's doing what and trying to become more efficient. So I do think we are doing a lot in those areas, it's just that infrastructure, that, those are big dollars.
Council Johnson?
I'd just like to make a brief comment and that is to, I, I really want to commend staff for thinking proactively on keeping a first weight, first rate water system here in Coon Rapids. All you have to do is look around the country and see that not every community has the same benefit of that as we do. And of course, we have rapids in our name, we're watering the name of the city and I'd like to see it be maintained as a first rate, a water service in, in the city. I think when I look at this, although nobody likes an increase when they see what they're getting in terms of infrastructure and updating and the caliber and quality of the water that they get in the city of Coon Rapids, it's, it's money really well spent. I don't ever want to see us being in a situation where we have debilitating infrastructure or we're trying to cut costs to the point that we end up being compared to Flint, Michigan. And so to put a fine point on it, I am fully in support of, of this increase and we will always continue to look for places where we can save money and cut costs back in, in other areas, but I think it's really important to be able to deliver this service.
Council Wells? Actually, Councilmember Johnson made my exact point and did it more eloquently than I would have. So I'll go to my second point. We're hearing a lot, because of water can, you know, it's a big topic with the state coming up with a bunch of money. Is that only going to be to cities that have done a poor job? I mean, is there ever going to be money available for someone like us who is actually doing a good job of keeping up like with our water tower? I mean, can you anticipate that or is that going to be something that? I mean, can you anticipate that or is that going to be something that is only going to be available to people that are really hurting?
Mr. Wells, or Councilmember Wells, I'm sorry, members of the council. A lot of that is geared towards maintenance. So it is to help those that have systems in place. None of that money is really geared for increasing. So if there's a growing community, for example, and you want to add a new tower, well, it's not to help you add to your system, it's just to help you maintain it. I kind of argued a few years ago when some of the grant dollars and loans were out there that, so if I just let my system go to shambles, I would have a better score and I could get more money from you to make the fix. And in all reality, that seems to be the case, but I would never advocate for letting things go to the point that you're there going, now I really need you, or I have to go to Sharon's office and get on my hands and knees and beg her. But there are more dollars that are out there.
You don't have to do that now?
You probably know just as well as I do.
Councilman?
I just want to say also, in the almost 40 years I've lived here, we never have had to read in the paper that Coon Rapids is in a crisis mode about any infrastructure or things we're doing. And that's just due to good planning by the staff. And this is just another example of it. It sure hurts to raise rates a little bit, but staying on top of things, which is exactly what we need to do to be a healthy city.
Well, and I'll turn that around because Mr. Mayor said it at the budget meeting, that you look at where we're spending our money and it's emergency services and infrastructure. So it's been a great city to work in with that regard, that the support is there to make sure that that is taken care of. So I'm just as grateful to you.
I like turning that tap on and getting that glass of 10,000-year-old water from down in those aquifers. Council...
Go ahead.
Council Geisler and then Councilman Clint.
I would like to reiterate what some of our, my fellow councilmembers talked about. It is about the infrastructure, but it's keeping ahead and it's doing the maintenance and, well, also encouraging the conservation. And it is an inverse relationship, you know? The cost for the infrastructure, the pipes are there, whether 1 gallon or 500 gallons are going through that pipe. And so making sure that we've got good and solid infrastructure ready and it's delivering good service as well as the conservation, this is one of the things that has to happen to make sure that we can continue to deliver that good service and conserve the resource.
Councilman?
I just want to be clear that I'm not saying that we shouldn't raise it. I'm just thinking 10% is too much. And to that end, the resolution, and it shows the individual increases, I'm just wondering how you came upon that, whereas tier one goes up 20%, I mean, 20 cents per gallon. Tier two and three, tier three each go up 25 cents. I mean, why the extra 5 cents?
They're all 11%, aren't they?
They're... I was striving for 10, rounding them to like a nickel, put me to 11 in some cases. So most of them are, other than that base fee, I actually have them here somewhere, but I don't know where. But other than the base fee, which, if you recall, we kind of talked about trying to drive the base fee up to kind of capture more of the fixed costs, so that goes up more than the 10, but rounded to 11 in some cases. So that's how that came about.
And I can understand that base fee.
Right. So the rest are 11% or 10 and 1/2, 11%. So they are across the board for the rest of the rates. It's just that base fee that goes up more than that 10% or whatever that was.
Your honor?
Does that make sense? I'm sorry, I've got the percents broken down, but I just, it's on one of these papers and I don't know which one.
As long as it's the same cost.
It is.
Council Johnson?
I would move adoption of Resolution 1641 establishing the new water rates for 2016.
Motion by Johnson, second by Wells, to adopt Resolution Number 16-42 establishing the... I'm sorry, nope, I skipped ahead. I should have just been quiet. 16-41 establishing water rates. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Item 14, on a related note, while we're trying to keep our enterprise fun and our water and sewer flowing, we're looking at a increase in sewer rates.
Correct. And mayor and council, it's a similar story, but a little bit different. We do have some infrastructure needs in there. We're continuing to line the pipes, so we've got that 1.2 million in there to line the sewer pipes. But the biggest factor what happened for 2016 in this fund is we all, all of the cities contribute to the Metropolitan Council Wastewater Division. And what they do is they take their monster budget and they allocate it based on the usage for all the cities. And it's delayed, so we're paying based on our usage through, I think it was September 2015 for the year prior. But what's happened in that case, they raised their budget, I think I mentioned it here, 5.8% or so, they raised their budget, but we're picking up a bigger portion of that because if they just proportion that budget back based on the usage, there's a lot of cities that have issues with inflow or infiltration. And I think a lot of those cities are probably starting to deal with that. I don't think we have that as much in Coon Rapids as a lot of the other cities. So as they deal with that, they have less increases into the system. Ours are probably constant, I mean, maybe going down, but theirs are going down more. So we're picking up a bigger piece of that pie, and that's a big piece. So you can see that that rate just alone, that causes us to have 11.6% in that line item. So that's a pretty big increase, and that's a big part of our budget. So that's why the sewer fund, that's one of the bigger hits in the sewer fund that we're trying to cover.
Questions?
Yeah. And what this breaks down to is, if I'm reading this right, a 5% increase?
Correct. We're pushing a few of those rates, I just want to point this out. We're pushing a few of the base rates for the commercial industrial, just trying to get those to be a... And the theory on that was you have these big pieces of property. So you have a commercial car dealership, for example. That's all lumped in with the commercial property. So they got a lot of pipe going by their business, but they're not putting in much water into the sewer, into the system, because they probably just have a sink. I mean, maybe they're doing some car washing or something, but it's probably not even going into the sewer. I don't know if they're recycling it, how they're doing it. But in any case, we're trying to drive that base rate up a little bit for those big parcels because there's so much more pipe to maintain that goes through, past a big parcel than all the concentrated dwellings. So that we're pushing a little bit, and we've done that very slowly over time, but that's part of what we're driving here.
Council, what are your wishes?
Your honor?
Councilman Manning?
I would, I'll move adoption of Resolution Number 16-42.
Motion by Manning, second by Demmer. Any further discussion?
Your honor?
Councilman Manning?
I just want to point out that this hasn't been raised since 2014, so in effect, it's like 2.5% a year, which still is 2.5% more than I would like. But when you have to do it, you have to do it, and I guess there's no getting around it.
Well, and when it's just a pass through. I mean, it's when we're actually getting built for this and we just have to pass it, yeah. It's tough. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Next item on our agenda is consider Resolution 16-43, which is our year-end budget appropriations. And we're looking at a reallocation of appropriations in the 2015 general fund budget. After all transactions are completed each year, the general fund budget is compared to year-to-date expenditures to ensure that each activity does not exceed budgeted amounts. Net adjustments equal to zero are being recommended. Budget appropriations require a simple majority vote. We're looking at carry forward of items from the 2015 to the 2016 budget, and we're looking at to consider carrying forward $4,400 in the general fund and $1,183,075 for other funds into fiscal year 2016 for items not purchased or completed in 2015 as detailed in Resolution Number 16-43. Does that cover it, or do you want to?
If that covers it, I just want to point out that a big piece of that 1.1 million is some of these water infrastructure projects that were started in 2015 and will be completed in 16. So they're the big, big items in there.
Thank you.
Your honor?
Council Wells?
I move Resolution 16-43 reallocating the 2005 general fund budget.
Second?
Motion. Motion by Wells, second by Geisler. I'll just restate that, adoption of Resolution 16-43 reallocating the 2015 general fund budget and amending the 2015 and 2016 budgets. Any discussion? Councilman Clint?
I know what we're saying here, but just on the outside of what it sounds like is, how did we screw up $1 million that we didn't use? Were we off on our budgeting process? And I know I brought this up at the budgeting time, that we always have these carryovers and stuff, and I understand the need, you know, to use them now in the next year, but are we doing something wrong in our budgeting process that we're not down, I mean, more accurate with our numbers?
Councilmember Clint, members of the council, $1 million of this is the well rehab, the SCADA system, booster pump, and the sanitary lining. The final payment for the sanitary sewer lining is in the finance department right now. That'll be on the next council agenda. SCADA will be complete by May 1st because that's when our big pumping season starts. So all of these things are in process. They've just taken longer than anticipated to get done. So probably $700,000 of this will be in front of you for final payment over the course of the next month, month and a half.
So it was just a timing issue? We thought it would get done sooner than what they actually did?
For me, that's part of it, yes.
Your honor?
Councilman?
Just so everyone knows out there, this is not an increase in the budget that's already been passed. It's just a reapportionment. So it's not like all of a sudden we're changing our budget, and I think people need to understand that.
It's basically money that wasn't used in 2015 by December 31st, because if the money wasn't incurred or the expenditure wasn't incurred at the end of December, then it's not a 2015 expense, so we're bringing it into 2016. So we're just moving that money from '15 to '16.
Don't get me wrong, you know, I see our reasoning, and I know it's part of the whole process, but to the general public, it just doesn't sound right, because in essence, we are moving the money into this year's budget. So that's what people can see.
But the last year's budget would be down, reduced by that amount.
Yeah, and that's why I'm saying, they could say, well, how can we be off that much? I mean, I see what you're saying, it's just...
Council Geisler?
You know, from a general business, a lot of times, we would use accrual and, you know, say, okay, we're going to accrue the funds that didn't get spent in '15 because maybe the project started late or there was a delay, and so we use 2015 money to pay it in 2016. That's all we're saying, is we're using the money that we budgeted and approved for the project that was mostly done in '15. We're writing the check in '16, and it's just a financial transaction.
Maybe that, it needs to have more of an explanation like that, rather than just removing money from here to here, one year to another, is to say, this project didn't get done, so we're holding that money until it gets done. You know, just more of an explanation for people to see what it is.
I think there's such an amazing number of moving parts in a government that for us to only be sliding a million from '15 to '16, and it's all stuff that's right on the cusp, I, for me, it doesn't bother me, but...
But people need to know that. I mean, for us as a government to say, oh, it's just a million dollars, it's a million dollars.
Yeah, but it's a million dollars that has already been allocated, so it isn't...
But so that's what it needs to say on paper. It needs to be explained to people, a little bit more clearly.
I'm all for making sure things are clear and understood, so whatever analogy works best, right? You say you're going to do something this week, and, you know, you don't get it done Saturday, but you get it done Sunday, you know, that's sort of the feeling it is for me, and I think you're right, that it's nice if we can explain it in a way people are going to understand. But I think the other thing to remember is, when we said we want to do this well rehabilitation, we had to put that amount of money in the budget in case it got finished in that year. And so you do have to, because if it didn't, and then we're sitting there, now we got a check, we, you know, we got a debt we can't pay. And so when you're budgeting like that, you do have to put it there, and this is, you know, clearly a tool that you can use to have those contingencies that, it would be bad if it was moving to, say, October. But I think people understand, or if it's explained nicely, people understand that things can move a month, and if they move the wrong month, it shows up as going into a different budget year. But, you know, even if you have an early spring and you can get it done earlier, or you have a, you know, whatever, those things are going to move around a little by a month. I think maybe the best thing to do would be to say how much of it will be taken care of within the first month of the year, because then it clearly looks like it's coming from last year and it's just because it got delayed for whatever reason. I think the other thing to point out is what an incredibly small percentage of the budget it is, and if it's a small enough percentage, then you understand it's just that stuff right on the edge.
I just want to read this one sentence, is net adjustments equal to zero are being recommended.
Alls I'm asking is that people like us, me, who aren't in business and don't deal with numbers and stuff, I just want an explanation on paper as to why it is.
Any other discussion?
I noted that for next year.
Do we have a motion on this yet?
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 16 is to consider adopting Resolution Number 16-8/8, approving plans and specs and ordering advertisement for bids for miscellaneous trail construction and rehabilitation. And we are looking at the replacement of the existing pedestrian bridge located within Erlinson Park, and we're looking at putting in a wider bridge that will actually accommodate an emergency vehicle or the snow plowing equipment to cross. We're looking at trail construction from Xavier Street to 105th Avenue between Dahlia and Riverview Parks. I walked those, all the trail, those trails all the time, except that one segment. And I thought, I realized, I don't go on that segment, and I asked my son, and he goes, oh, it's horrible. So, all right. And then a new trail construction at Peppermint Stick Park. So.
Mr. Mayor, just to point a clarification on this item, I had mentioned it would be funded out of 510, which is the general fund under maintenance. It's actually under Maintenance Services, Activity 794.
It's actually under the park improvement fund.
Park improvement, thank you.
So will that impact our motion here, or?
It's a different pot of money, and I wanted to be clear, so when I go to Sharon, she'll go, you don't have any money in that account.
Councilman Clint?
Can I just ask for the trail at Peppermint Park? Are we utilizing that extra area now that we got after that house got torn down?
Councilmember Clint, we have removed the home. We've removed the fence portion of that. We're going to look at expanding. We've tried to go to the school over there and see if they wanted to do some sort of a native planting or some sort of a school project. We've been unsuccessful in doing that. This is not related to that. We've got a nice trail loop. If you remember, we redid that park about a year and a half ago. Well, there's a nice goat trail right through the middle because there isn't a trail that runs between the shelter, and so we should probably pave that. That's, people don't walk around when they go through there to get to the school. So they've made a trail for us. We're going to pave it and make it better, but we're also going to look at that area and try to incorporate something into that. We just haven't got to it yet.
Councilor Demmer?
Move to adopt Resolution Number 16-8/8, approving plans and specs and ordering ad for bids for miscellaneous trail construction rehabilitation with the change to the budget impact suggested.
Activity 794. Activity 794.
Second.
Motion by Decker, second by Geisler. Any discussion? And I like that, following paths with trails, you know? They already know where they want to go, so let's just pave it then.
Do the same thing with sidewalks along Comrass Boulevard.
Got a couple paths that we'd like to fill in.
Do it everywhere, wait.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 17 is to consider an easement agreement for Project 15 dash 15 intersection improvement at Northdale Boulevard and Redwood Street. This looks like it's just cleaning up. We just needed one additional easement. So this intersection signalization project is being completed in conjunction with the St. Creek Park redevelopment to improve site access and pedestrian, pedestrian safety. And we just need to do one more easement.
Your Honor.
Counselor Manning.
I move that way, except the permanent easement.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Decker. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 18 is to consider policies on park donations and naming parks, park facilities and trails. And had a lot of stuff to read in here. Anybody want to hit the highlights or?
Can we ask a question?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead, Counselor Clint.
A question I have that I just can't picture in my head when we talk about recognition areas or other park physical improvement donations. We're not going to have like just like something out in the middle of nowhere. Are we with like a plaque on it?
Councilmember Clint, primarily what we're trying to do is memorialize what we've historically done. It's basically been some trees and some benches. We've had people come forward and say, I want to name this field, or can I name this building, or can I name this park? And so what this does is gives you the flexibility to look at them on a case by case basis. When we talked about it in the work session, one of the things that we wanted to include was it must be within the character of the park or the master plan. So they're a case by case scenario and every one of them has to go through the Park and Rec Commission as well as yourselves. And so they're, it's not like we're just going to start putting these up. So if it's just the benches and the trees, we'll continue to handle those at the staff level. If they're more pronounced or more costly improvements, or there's dollars that come with them, then all of those come running through the Park and Rec and the City Council.
And the language that's included in here is the donor recognition component of a park physical improvement donation should be incidental to the park physical improvement. So I think that kind of rules out something onerous out there, or big, big out there. Ostentatious. I did have a question in the, there's all these things for filtering, not filtering. The language included on the bench recognition plaque is subject to the following restrictions. And it lists, you know, it cannot endorse or promote unlawful activity, you know, age restricted products. It's got all these things. And I'm just wondering, it doesn't seem like we have kind of a general catchall of or just determined to be offensive. Is there, you know, it seems like we're specific to unlawful activity, age restricted products, detrimental to health, welfare, or safety of children, promote sexually explicit things, sales pitch phone numbers. You know, it just seems like, is there, should there be something in there that just says that if we find it offensive or is that too subjective? Or don't we need it? Is that too much? It's just a question.
I, I, I like the more specific examples. I, I just consider these examples and if there's something else that comes up that's not listed in here, we can talk about that.
It just, well, but it says, "Language included on the bench is subject to the following restrictions." It doesn't list any other restrictions. It doesn't list like a restriction that, that it's found offensive, morally offensive.
Maybe we should put in something like or other situations that may be considered by the council or something like that.
And maybe I'm being over critical, I don't know, I'm just curious.
Your Honor.
Counselor Johnson.
If I might just ask of staff, and I don't know who wants to take it, but I, this is not an ordinance, as I understand it. I mean, this is, this is a, a way to memorialize, to help our staff who is engaging in conversations with people who might want to donate something or might want to name something as a guideline for how to approach those conversations and things like that. It's always subject to council approval. I, I think the, the concern that's being raised is, is a legitimate concern, which is, you know, if it doesn't squarely fit into one of these things, does that give somebody the right then if they come with a concept to have the council approve that concept? My view, being one council member, is no, it doesn't give them the right. We can always decline a request to name something and they don't get a right by having this procedure. But it does help guide staff conversations with that. And if there is a different view, I'd, I'd like to know that.
Well, I would suggest that this is a policy.
Right.
But bench plaques don't come in front, before the council. Like if somebody wants to put a bench on a plaque or a, a plaque on a bench, it's subject to this policy, that wouldn't necessarily come in front of us that, hey, Jim Johnson wants to put a plaque on a bench, correct?
Unless the staff wanted it to come to us because it was an unusual request.
And that's one thing I don't see written here, and maybe that's something we could add, is, I mean, right now, you're saying for these simple requests, this is the authority. And maybe it's, or as determined by staff to bring it forward through the, the process. But I, I agree, Councilmember Johnson, I would certainly say no. And if they wanted to say, well, your policy doesn't forbid it, I'd say, well, then it's a conversation we'll have with the City Council and we'll take it through the process.
Counselor Decker.
As the, you know, coming in newer and trying to wade through those sort of discussions where there was a resolution that was passed 20 years ago, and now we're all trying to figure out what it actually meant and what discretion they meant us to have, I err to the side of actually putting something in that's specific about discretion. You know, and if it had something in it that said, this is the process. So if, if the staff found it questionable, it can come before council. That would be a perfectly fine thing to add in for me. I think that makes it clear. It's also nice if we say what we meant by questionable, you know, so it's not, well, is the font big enough? It's, is it offensive to the city or does it demean the park or the city in some way or, or whatever? If we, if we have some idea of what that is and write it in, I think it's, it's easier for us to interpret later.
It's prob, it's probably, it's a significant lesser volume than vanity plates, but every once in a while, one of those slips through where they have to go, oh, 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 we got to get that one back. So that's all I was thinking about. Mr. Stenwaddle.
Mayor, counsel, I was going to mention, I think it'd be fairly easy to build something, you know, based on the conversation about sort of staff discretion, but to the extent staff denies it for these reasons or others not listed, you know, that the applicant would have the right to, you know, bring their issue before council. I think it'd be pretty straightforward. It would be a sort of unique circumstance, but you're right, we're not going to be able to list every single thing we might find offensive, especially 10 years from now when things have evolved, right? And we, we just don't know what might come our way. So I think building something in there that would allow us to adjust to them, those circumstances would be fairly easy. We can, we can do that. In regard to Councilmember Johnson's point, yes, I would agree that setting this up as a policy is meant to be more as a guideline for how these things are approached, not always a verbatim process that, that like an ordinance would be, that, you know, we're stuck to these parameters and only those parameters. And to the extent we run into those unique circumstances, we can always, as a staff, bring those to council and say, here's where we're at, what do you think? If we, we have some question about that.
Mr. Mayor. I think, I think even a modest change to say that something along the lines of a staff in its judgment determines that what's being proposed is not in the best interest of the city of Coon Rapids, that the matter could be referred to, the City Council would be ample enough, something along those lines to give you that option.
Your Honor.
Counselor Clint.
And maybe I've not seen it, but I can't find anything related to religious, overtones or?
Well, shall not, shall not directly advertise organization or cause. Does that maybe fit in? Because I was thinking the same thing, that, that vanity plight, the last one that I know was recalled, it really doesn't even fit into any of these restrictions.
I mean, I just think that's such a controversial topic that maybe there should be something in there about not wanting it, so that we don't have to deal with that.
All right. Are we making any modifications or are we just going with this?
Well, we'll make, as noted here, and we can certainly bring it back for your final blessing if you wanted to table it or continue it or, that's your call.
Well, I mean, I would be happy leaving, you use your discretion. I'd just like to see some language added, just, you know, that if, if it was found to be otherwise offensive or something.
Mayor, counsel, I think, yeah, if, if, I guess from a staff perspective, I think it would make sense for us if you considered it and then based on, you know, even a part of the motion to include the other points council has discussed. And I think that'd give us adequate authority to adjust the policy. And given that it is a policy and not an ordinance, I don't think we have to have it 100% correct. We can adjust afterward.
Counselor Decker.
I will move to approve the park physical improvement donation policy and policy for naming and renaming of parks, park facilities and trails, assuming an added bullet about discretion and appeal. And in general, I think it looks really good.
Second.
Okay, motion by Decker, second by Clint. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. According to my agenda, that's our last item. So we are up to the open mic and public comment. Are you here for open mic, sir? No? Well, I don't want to put you on the spot.
I'm just representing the community.
Well, we appreciate that. No, you're actually our hero for being here. Thank you. Oh, we weren't done yet.
Three more minutes.
Yeah. Coffee and cookies, let's consider that under other business. All right, so we, nobody here for open mic? We have no reports on previous open mics and we are to other business. Counsel.
Your Honor.
Let's serve with Counselor Manning.
I just, on the upcoming chicken ordinance, it's hard to even say that. I did get one email, a suggestion that I thought was probably good to put out when this is finally all said and done, mailed out or whatever it's going to be, that it is a, whoever has chickens, their responsibility to report if there's any type of illness going through their chickens or, or whatever, you know, something that would say basically that they're, they're responsible for letting, I, I don't even know if that's, if, if that is, you know, should be part of an ordinance, but, but it just sounds like a good idea. I mean, they probably would report it anyway, but just in case they don't know that.
And I don't even know what's, I don't recall if there's anything like that in there or not. All right. On the topic of the chicken ordinance, we're looking at introducing it at the April 19th meeting, which would be the next council meeting. And then we would be considering it at the first meeting in May. So when we do the introduction, we will let folks know if there will be a public hearing or a public comment period at the council meeting. Does that make sense? Okay.
Yep. Mayor, counsel in that regard, it, it's not set up for a public hearing, an official public hearing. If council desires to allow for public input, we think it'd be best to sort of establish that at the time of introduction so people are aware that that's an opportunity.
All right, Counselor Clint.
Last month, we had a, some visitors from the Chinese consulate come and visit us and talk to mayor, myself and some of the staff members. And I just wanted to know if we've got somebody following up on that within the business community to see if we have some interest with our businesses about furthering this cooperation with, with China and our, and our sister city.
The silence is deafening. Oh, Matt's got his hand.
Mayor, counsel, I did exchange a couple of emails with one of those representatives from the consulate who was going to reach out to Chaoqing, China and sort of see what their interest was. And I think that's, that's about as far as it's gone here in the last month, but it certainly still is on the radar. And I could, probably good reminder, I can follow up with her to see if she's heard me getting back yet.
Okay, great, thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Decker.
So there's a couple of Coon Rapids residents registered for the Boston Marathon, which is before our next meeting. And I just want to wish them all good luck. Go out there and have a great run and start tapering here pretty quick.
Are you one of them?
Not you.
No.
You're not going back or what?
Maybe someday.
You going to wait till you can race, race in the senior class or something? All right, very good. I had just a couple of things. I wanted to congratulate Hamilton Elementary School on their, celebrating their 50th anniversary. They had a very nice open house last Friday with some really good cake and punch and coffee. And it's, and a really fun video from their 25th anniversary where the teachers were reflecting on, you know, for their first 25 years. It was a very nice event. Congratulations to them. Secondly, if you have checked your mailbox, you should have your brand new hot off the press Park, Coon Rapids Parks and Recreation Guide. This is an awesome piece. Staff did an awesome job on it. Thank you very much. Getting really positive feedback on that. And that's all I got.
One more thing. Somebody did ask me when the parade is, and it's July 2nd, right? That's when the parade is going to be?
Saturday.
It's, well, it says 2nd through the 4th for the 4th of July activities, but doesn't specifically say when the parade is.
The parade is Saturday.
Okay, but the 2nd is a Saturday. It's always, the parade's always the first day of the activities, isn't it?
It's going to be Saturday, the 2nd.
Okay. Any other, other business? Oh, Chief Y, Chief Piper, Chief Piper, sorry.
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. Just a quick note that we heard from Lieutenant Governor Tina Smith and she, along with Transportation Commissioner Charlie Zelli, will be here at Coon Rapids for a transportation roundtable this coming Friday, April 8th at 10 o'clock here in the council chambers to discuss local transportation issues here, including the Hanson grade separation that we're all hoping gets approved this year at the legislature and of course Highway 10, Third Lane and some other stuff. So again, it's, it's coming Friday, April 8th at 10 o'clock here at City Hall in the council chambers.
Mr. Gutnik, the communications director for MINDOT, said that while the lieutenant governor is here, she also wanted to talk about 610. And he said, but that's in Hennepin County. And I said, wait, we have a 610 here that still needs full access and Coon Rapids Boulevard needs river road, so let's talk about it. Mr. Stenwaddle.
Mayor, counsel, I just want to note that the start time of that has changed from 10:30 to 10 o'clock. So we just learned about that late this afternoon. So the emails I had sent out previous, that actually did change. So I'll, I'll send another note out just to confirm that with everybody who previously sent that out to, so it's a little bit fluid at the situation, at this time, but we're looking forward to having everybody here.
So that will be this Friday, is that April 8th?
Yes.
At 10 a.m. Okay, thank you. Any other business?
One more, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hammer.
I could wait till the next meeting, but I'm going to bring it up now. The ice show at the Coon Rapids Ice Center, the 21st through the 24th. The 19th would suffice, but you can get your tickets now and be assured to spot Thursday the 21st through Sunday.
twenty-first through Sunday, the twenty-fourth.
Excellent, and that's always a fabulous ice show.
Yes, it is.
Beautiful ice arena, so, all right, anybody else?
Your Honor, are you going to be the emcee of that again?
I am not, no, ever since, no, I didn't get to do it last year, and I'm not doing it this year.
Well, the one year I saw you do it, you did a great job.
Well, thank you, apparently not good enough for them, but that's okay, just kidding. Thank you. All right, are we done? Move to adjourn. Motion by Johnson, second by Wells, to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You're adjourned. All right.